Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the New Year of 2017. I hope everybody has a very Merry Christmas and a nice Happy New Year, and safe as well. So we're gonna kick it off this year and open our meeting. We'll go ahead and call them in order at this time. Please turn all cell phones, electronic devices off at this time. And Mr. Bob, would you please lead us in our prayer and our pledge to see good service?
Heavenly Father, there's one thing we're aware of as we go into this new year, that we have a divided nation, we have a divided world. We pray for your intervention in that, and we pray for those in the military and our police officers who strive to bring peace and justice to our country, to this world. And if we'll remember one thing from Psalms, blessed is the nation whose God is their Lord, and our Lord is Jesus Christ. Be with us as we enter into this meeting. We strive for your wisdom with each other and for this community. And it is in Christ most holy name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the developed, righteous saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, consider approval of the minutes of the December 5th, 2016 meeting.
Next month, when we approve the minutes, eh?
Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. But we carry. Visitors who are not on the regular journey will be given the opportunity to address accounts on any subject at this time. Anyone here to address anything that's on their business?
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
Oh, why not? You what? You mad at police officers?
He's not a matchmaker.
Oh. The Valley View Sports Association has got approval from the school to clean up soccer fields. I'm here to see if we can put it on the next agenda, see if y'all, the city can help clear the fields as a matter of grubbing and leveling out those soccer fields.
Does that mean we're resurrecting our soccer program?
We are going to try to resurrect it. We have changed, or we're in the process of changing our name to the Baseball Association, to Sports Association. So that way we can cover all the sports, basketball, football, soccer, everything. Even volleyball and charity, I think we're gonna get into.
Oh, wow.
So, in order to do that, we're gonna get these fields cleared. I know, I think the first season we're gonna start is in March. I doubt the fields will be ready, but the school is more than happy to work with us to use the track field, to use the practice fields for the games this spring. So hopefully with y'all helping clear it, level, new dirt, new grass, and start with it.
Awesome.
Now, we're in the process of raising money to do that also. All right, that's all I got.
You know there's a lot of sprinklers out there to deal with.
The, they had a guy, the school had a guy go out there for the sprinkler system, and it's complete.
Okay.
So, main thing is just getting all the trees up and-
Clear it.
Clear it, and maybe later on down the road we'll put sprinklers in there or something.
Good. Awesome.
All this rain we have, it's gonna be green.
Yep, let's go.
All right.
Did you hear? Awesome, awesome. Thank you, sir. Right, consider approval of the building permits. I believe we had two. And actually, one is for a tower for a sale site.
Yes.
So, one for Mr. Hardy, for mobility.
Yeah, there's pictures up there. That's exactly where you're going.
Okay.
It's already there, it's on, it's on, it's actually between 13th and 14th Street on Sharp Avenue. And it's kinda located in that back corner.
Is that where it's going? Okay, same number 14.
It's truly an incorrect address.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah. According to his address, it should be on the other side of, should be on 14th Street, closer to the street rather than the outlet.
Okay.
And technically, it's facing Sharp instead of 14th. So the address is completely inaccurate, but, do we know what his intentions are? Did he say that, is he just gonna leave it there, or once he, once he's done?
No, no, it's, Steve's father didn't even know he said. Brian, another refurbished fireworks stand?
It is, yes, sir, it is.
It is, it's not his intention to-
He can't sell fireworks in town.
I know that, I just wondered.
Um, and it clearly is for sale, so I don't, I don't know what his intention is, and it's not even on permits. I mean, it's, that thing could get picked up and moved in an hour or so, I mean.
Do you have that property?
Yeah, he owns a whole block for the style of the block there.
We also noticed when we went out there and looked, can you put the mouse on approximately where that RV is?
Right there where that yellow house looking thing right here.
That's where the, that's where the building is now. But then if you come back towards 14th Street, there's an RV there. Go over, yeah, right there, that's new, right? That's, and he did not give a building permit for that at all, did he?
I think there's also one right in here.
Here, there is.
I don't know if that one's-
I think that one has been grandfathered, but the one where your mouse is right now is new, and it's come in since the ordinance was passed. And it's clearly, it's over 10 years, it's probably 30 years old.
It's an RV or a model?
It's an RV. It's a, if I get to the back of your truck, bucket pool, looks like it should be in a deer lease.
It's like a trailer.
Yeah. And I don't know what the intent of that is. I don't know what the intent of the pink building is. I think it meets code, but I'm hesitant to approve the permit right now, especially since it's such a temporary building. I'd like to tell us. I would like to table this particular one, so we can kinda investigate further what's, what is he gonna do with it, because I'm afraid he's gonna rent it out.
Store it?
I heard it says if snow comes in it-
There is, there is a trailer, show them where the original, where that other trailer is, kinda location. You know the little camper chills that you live in, or camp out of, the back of pickup? There's one over there, and he's got a guy living out of it. That's a-
You mean the big ones you set in the back, that have doors and-
Yeah.
He told me about the camper stuff.
That's what I was gonna say.
It can be cold.
You know, crawling there.
It's gonna be cold.
You said it, yeah. You know, if you bugger like that, it's good.
Sorry. No, no, you're all right, you're all right. I'm just, I'm concerned about what the, what the area's turned into.
Well, and the question, does this building have anything to do with that RV, which is a separate issue, but still some charming issue?
Yeah, it has a first sale sign on it, and I think he probably bought it with the first sale sign on it and just hadn't taken it off, because why would he put a permit to put it there?
I don't know what his, I don't know what his intention is, though. I mean, and I guess, you know, I'm just trying to avoid him putting something down there, leasing that thing out, and now all of a sudden we gotta come out there.
Right.
Well, and that's, and that's residential.
Mm-hmm. Is that R1 or R2, Corey? Doesn't matter.
Uh, it's R2.
Yeah, I think that's- Yeah.
R2. All right, listen, the other permit, which is basically a sale site, it's gonna be between margin and East Avenue?
This just came in today. Came in this morning, and they're gonna put a sale tower up. It says it's gonna be for Sprint, but it's probably gonna end up being for all the major companies. The sale, the guy who came in, it's the latest craziest, you know, we'll all be having Back to the Future, and going back in time, it's so fast. But the location was somewhat concerning to me, but I think there's some flexibility on the location. It's-
That's actually different than what we thought, you know, over here.
Yeah.
It's actually right there by the, what is it?
Ghetto, Ghetto?
Yeah. Okay, so it's not, okay.
It's not by residential housing, it's by other places.
It's by wheelbowers.
Okay.
What is the purpose of that site versus just going up another mile and being on the tower that's already there?
They, we asked the question, and he just said that's where they wanna put it, and we did, said what does it need to do, and one of the things we talked about was building permit. We don't have anything in our code that prohibits a tower being constructed, but-
That landowners get some-
Yeah. My concern is if they build it too, that's gonna be in the state roadway at some point.
Well, that's right there on that state road. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
If they build it too close, it'll be right there on the state roadway. I mean, by both of the pictures, it's too close to the highway. But that's a text site issue, not an asset issue.
Steve said, he told me that they only need eight feet, I don't know if that's a, eight feet square that the tower's gonna hit, because he said there's no lines coming off of the tower. I don't know how that would work, I mean.
Most of the state highways, though, if you're in the roadway, they want you 10 to 12 foot behind it.
Yeah.
And if you're at eight foot, they'll make you move it two feet.
No, I mean, the square area where the tower was standing, where you'd like eight foot, not eight foot square, I guess.
Okay.
But I don't know how it would work without having cables and stuff on them.
It doesn't say, yeah, his height is 123 feet.
Well, that's where the fiber is.
Yeah.
They put it on that fiber.
Yeah.
So they made that fiber out there.
I don't think that fiber, that's not, it's above ground, isn't it?
What, that fiber?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't look big, but I mean, I guess it could be. No, it's, hey, thanks for power service under sidewalk installed by contractor.
Okay.
So-
Yeah, that one, I tied it too.
Yeah. It'd be almost beat up, I'm sure. Pretty expensive fiber, it'd be running over all the time.
You are correct.
Well, and they, they literally have it. They, they marked the approximate roadway, which is 15 feet, 20 feet.
Mm-hmm.
From the edge of the shoulder. So, the question becomes, I mean, how are they gonna get approval?
From?
The text.
They, he said there's a number, literally hundreds of these sites, the text site is not approved, couldn't send it around. And so, I think, I, my, if that specific location ends up being a text op roadway, they'll move it back off of the text op roadway, and just talk to the property.
Well, do we have any liability if you approve something that's within text op roadway without mortifying?
Text sites roadway supersedes us.
Well, I'm just saying, do we have any liability?
Do we have any liability?
Right. I was gonna say, do we say, okay, you're fine, and they build it, and the text op goes back, says that's in the roadway.
That's on them, that's not gonna be on us.
That's just for making sure.
Yeah, that's-
They want to call it up here.
Brian, you don't take this kind of thrust on us a little too quick, let's put to you today.
It was brought in today, there's a lot more questions, obviously, that I have. I was about to get to your point. I, I think the point is, I think-
Yeah, the man should be tabled.
Just give me some, this isn't as cut and dry as it was this morning, because I- Corey, can you show me where I thought the original location was?
It's not over here.
Yeah. I thought it was kinda down from that burrito place.
That's a school property right there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the little west part.
And, you know, at that point, I thought it was gonna be closer to East Avenue than it was the highway. But where it's at over there by Fowler, there's a lot of questions. In fact, liability is one of them, as I sit and talking things about this, I'm, I'm 99% certain it's gonna be on them. We would not have any liability as far as taking it down, that'd be on the contractor. But I definitely would like to get some kind of detectives with the textile further before we go ahead and just sign off on it. Because once you-
And the tower, I think you're liable. Now, there must be some added costs if you don't put it as close to the fiber, possibly.
Yeah.
And so that's what they're, that's what they're gonna have to-
Yeah.
The fiber is, the fiber is inside the roadway, and we don't want the place to say it's inside the roadway, it's the drawing, it's obviously-
There's gonna be, there's gonna be a text op.
Yeah, I mean, because this is, this is the roadway, the proximal roadway right here, and that is 15 feet inside the proximal roadway, it's five foot off the shoulder.
I agree.
So-
You're, you're, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a text op issue, yeah.
Well, my other catch is, there's a tower a mile back up the road, right there on the right, you know, same highway.
Somebody's in the property, you can, you can, we'll contact it all the time if we wanna put towers.
Okay.
And, and there's other, other issues with those towers, too.
We offered the PD and fire department over here.
Yeah, but they don't have their own tower.
Well-
Because your own tower becomes an asset.
Yeah.
That's just a lease.
Yeah.
So you're not really, you're not really an asset.
Yeah.
It's just a tower space, and somebody always decides that-
They don't wanna-
You don't get it.
I'm pretty sure that's happened somewhere along the way.
I'm sure.
With all's blessing, I would like to table both of these, so I can, I can, I'll investigate further on what Hardy wants to do with the building, and then I will check with the local office of text op, the Los Alamos Police and Angelo District Office as well, and just say we have a roadway concern.
Another thing we ought to think about is, in our building codes, addressing the salaries-
Because they're gonna come up.
Because, I mean, I just put a big ugly one on my backyard, nobody's saying anything if there's no building codes like that.
True.
Every time I hear those, yeah, we remember Maslow. Claude Maslow had a tower in his backyard, and he rented space out to Two Way Radio. In fact, I rented space, I, I wouldn't wanna see that happen in town.
All right.
Do we shoot that with PNZ?
Yes.
Do these things come to PNZ, like to do them from a level, anything?
No.
No.
No, that's just up there.
Right. You had a request of where it's-
There's a request, it's done.
Make a motion, we, uh, pay the code, building permits?
Second.
True.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. All right. Here's the police activity month report from inner chief of police, Mr. Stan Morris. Real quick, Stan, I noticed that you have copies behind the copy. So did y'all do a weekly report before the-
We all, we all do a weekly report.
Okay.
And then the whole, whole month, and I, I think I remember if it's just in the month there, of course, we haven't been around here, so too.
Well, I was just asking, because I noticed we had five seats instead of one.
Yeah, no, I was just braid the cracks down in the week, and then the, I think that's what property is for a month at most.
Awesome. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's fine. Uh, 316 calls from the month of December, um, 28 citations issued with two curfew violations and one dispute of tobacco, I believe, is what it was, minor possession.
Yeah, tobacco.
Tobacco. So, we had a little over 5200 biological fights. Slow month on citations, training new officers, we also had one with short timers, didn't wanna do anything before we left, so, which I guess, um, some of you may not know, Travis is very good luck. He put in his two weeks, his last day was the 31st. I've hired Suzanne Torres, like his spot.
Who is reserved, it's like her.
Who is a reserve officer. And she'll be full, full-time, she actually started last Sunday. Chad Mercer started Monday. And we hired Martha Speckles for the office, she started last week, and she's, she was sent two days, two, three days to Libya before she left, so, getting everybody going, so, the transition, yeah.
Nothing exciting happen over the holidays?
Nothing too exciting, um, that wore us, but nothing, nothing real major.
Was there any particular reason Travis left?
No. I think his heart was set on family. He's been in county forever, on the 26th year loan.
Yeah.
They always dealt with him, they hired him, so-
Oh, I didn't know anybody in county, okay. So chief deputy?
I don't know, he'll tell.
I was just curious, just when we had an officer leave, that's one of them. Because if five of them leave, it's one reason, we might need to solve that problem.
I mean, I think a lot of it, one of their bottles, you can't hire rollers, so we couldn't hire, you couldn't hire them, but his dad was shot.
Oh, yeah.
And so now that his dad's gone, to be honest, so, that's where you're at.
All right.
Are we set on officers, or we still need to hire?
Um, no, we're set, it's just a matter of training them now. I do believe, I gave Suzanne about a month, nothing half, half before she's on her own. I said we wanted Chad Mercer, he's about two, three, two and a half months out, and then Justin's gonna take the longest, because he's the newest, he's a freshman out of the academy, so they can pull up at time and go through everything. We'll do the reductions in the next meeting. I do plan on bringing all the new people in next meeting, so that way everybody will be in this, and, uh, go.
Awesome. All right. Awesome, awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along, next up is the distributed very, and we're going to see a demonstration of the new water building system. As far as automated meters and the information that you yourself can see for customers with their new meters, gives you a daily, weekly, and monthly, right? And our-
While Debbie is setting that up, I wanted kinda just to get y'all brief of where we are. Um, these were, uh, this is a project that was paid for from the Texas Water Development Board. Uh, the approximate cost was a little under $850,000, but we only financed about $600,000 of that, um, because we got some grants to pay for it. It's on a 10-year note to our development board, an approximate payment of about $60, $65,000 annually, comes, comes a little over $5,000 a month for us to have this system. But that includes, it's not just the system, it's 2,200 new meters, it's, um, uh, the collector, so we own, and Corey, feel free to check, you know, step in here on the technology side of this. It's not a cellular technology, we own the network, essentially is how it works. So we're not dependent on Sprint, or AT&amp;T, or someone else to transfer the signals. Like, for whatever reason, the collector goes down, we have a radio read capability where we can literally just drive around in the truck, and it'll pull the meters, and we just plug it into, to the computer, and it uploads all the data. And so, it's, uh, probably, in the state of the art, a lot of my counterparts wanna come look at this system when we get probably up and running, and, uh, because there's a lot of cities that wanna move to this right here. It's not necessarily going to eliminate any sort of position, but what it will do is it'll free up time for the department. For example, um, you can almost say from, well, next Monday through next Friday, without the system, we would have all been reading meters. Literally, street department, branch, water, everybody's reading meters. And with this new system, it reads, what, Corey, about 98, 99%?
Yeah, there's still some that haven't been sold, and I'm not sure if they've already got all the cast iron lids and all.
Yeah.
I know that was still working on that.
Yeah, we, we got a couple of two-inch meters that we're, we're getting replaced in, we're gonna do, we're doing those ourselves versus have, for whatever reason, they just charge more for two-inch, and we can do that just as well. But we're, we're, we'll get those two inches in, but it's gonna, the coverage is pretty much there, right?
Yeah.
It's even covering the meter out at the Lake Ivey line, where we intersect the bi- alley, Ivey top line, it's reading that meter, so he's not having to drive 15 miles on a branch, I'm assuming a ranch road, it's a deer lease quality thoroughfare. So, without any further ado, Mr. Berry, she's, and Debbie's done a yeoman's job of getting this thing set up, she's gone above and beyond what we would need and what we've asked of her, so she's the guru.
We just really appreciate this system. It's made our lives easier in the last month. So, basically, right here, what you're looking at is the, the green area, that's all good. That is reading 1,935 meters. The orange is 58 meters that it can't find, it doesn't, it's either got a cast iron lid on it, or something like that from some reason or another, it can't find that meter and where to put the reading. So that's pretty good, that's only, what, 2.9%? And a lot of those, when I, when I pull the report up, they don't have a reading on them, so it's probably like a sprinkler meter, or something like that, but it's just not, it doesn't know where it's at. But it, it, it's a lot better, because it was like 61 and 70, and we've seen it come down, and I even found some that I built the account in this system, and it, it picked it up, so our account went down, so it's just a matter of finding them, so. We had a lot of today, people wanting to know why their bill was so high. Well, we'll look on J.C. Gore, because he said, why is my bill so dying hot? So we put him in here, and we pulled him up, and if you look right over here, it says an intermittent or a continuous leak. It's telling us that he's had a leak all the way from when we started, 11/19. And so he went home, found it, it was his toilet, and changed it all out, and he wanted me to look and see if I could tell if it was still leaking, but I couldn't, because it's a day, I could look at yesterday's, but not today. So tomorrow, I told him, I'd call him and let him know what today looks like. But, um, these graphs over here, this is November when we started, and then this one would be December, and you can click on them, and it brings you up by day. This graph is, is by day. And like this one right here, he used a lot of water, he used 686 gallons of water on the 28th. So if you double-click on that, it brings it into an hourly mode. So like right here, between 9:00 and 10:00 a.m., he used 81.5 gallons of water. So something was wrong.
Click through, 2:00 in the morning.
Let's see, that would be... Let's get it back here. Let's see, it wasn't, he used 10.4 gallons, so maybe a toilet flush or ran, or something like that.
You, you were getting to the, you used your toilet when?
About what?
Yeah, I'll let you finish them.
But it's, it's really been nice, because like today, I had somebody come in, and she said, well, why is my bill so high? And I said, well, let's look, and she said, I haven't had a leak, I haven't had anything. Well, I pulled it up, and it was continuous, 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 and I said, you do have a leak. Well, yeah, but we fixed it. I said, well, you didn't fix it in this building. I said, well, you didn't fix it in this billing time. I said, because our billing is always a month behind. You use your water before you're billed for it. You know, so then it kind of clicked with her because I could show her the graph. And I'm sure hourly, well, you know, you use sixty-eight gallons right here, you know, in this one hour. You know, surely you didn't earn water for an hour. You know, so something, something was going on. And a lot of times, they, they just don't think that it's their toilet, and, and a lot of times it is. And this continuous leak that it's showing, that's what it could be. It could be a little stream of water, because that's continuous. Or like if the toilet is coming on and going off, and coming on and going off, then that's the intermittent, because it's just, it's catching it when it comes on. But it's, it's been really, really useful.
Go to Sam Mallory. I want to pick on Sam. He likes this part. We already looked at this the other day, so he likes this one. I know you're a kid skin. Sam had a conversation with me about his water bill. And it was high.
And so we can work it out by account number, address, name. There's, there's all different kinds that we can.
Samuel E. Mallory.
Sam, you know how many leaks?
Right now.
But go to, go to the month of December. I can tell you when Sam's kids came home.
They came home when they did their.
I can tell you when he did la, Laura did laundry. Right here. His kids came home, right here.
The twenty-fourth, they had lots of water going on.
Yeah.
And between fourteen and fifteen hundred hours.
Kids decided to do laundry.
Yeah. A hundred and nineteen gallons. So, you know, if, if you look at it, I'm like, my friend, I'm here, I can tell him when he flushed the toilet. You know, that I, he thought I was pretty freaky. Cause most of the early morning hours, you're not going to see any color on that chart. Yes, it's, it's just very, exactly, like right here is three point nine. It is probably a toilet flush, or somebody turned the water on to wash their hands, or, yeah. So then, you know, like right here, there's, it doesn't even probably show anything in these areas, like point two.
But the point of the system, when we did this a year ago, and, and I think you can see the results now. We're trying to get as much information into our customers' hands. And, and, you know, the thing with the meters is, and I've said this all last year, new meters do not read slower. They're going to read accurately, and these are ninety. What's the accuracy on this particular meter, ninety?
It's ninety-nine.
Yeah.
It's ninety-nine point something.
Yeah, it just reads every single block.
Yeah. And so, the cool thing eventually is, you don't have to call Debbie or Melissa to get this data. I would say within the next two to three and four months, we'll have a link and you can set up your own account, and your own portal. And you can look at your account, and your usage of how, of what you're doing. So if you think you got a leak, but I don't know, you can log on and do it. You can also get, you want to do the email?
You can, I can't get the reports to come up. Um, you can go in. Studies, and you can go to event maintenance. And all these over here, you can set an alarm if you've got a leak, if you've got a flow, if it, you've got a reverse flow. And you just set it up and put your email in it, and it sends you an email. I did it this time, and I got an email because I don't have a leak. But if, I set it up with a couple of others just to try it out, and I have an email.
So you're manually doing it here at the office for them to get a form? Okay, rather than being able to see it? So we're at least able to do that right now?
Yeah, but hopefully, we'll be able to get that going pretty soon. And then this reports up here, she's, we're supposed to be getting that thing, so I gotta call her tomorrow, because then I don't know, maybe she'll drop the ball over and open. That should be able to give me a report, a very accurate report of all the consumption that has gone through the, the water plant. Because at the end of the year, which is now, and this is my type of year I don't like, because Randy comes to me and says, I need this report, I need this report, I need this report. Well, USC I isn't always as accurate as what it should be, because we're kind of off in on numbers. So we have to kind of work together and figure it out, but this should be able to tell me exactly.
What, what's left in the plant. That's how we determine our water loss, because what leaves a plant versus what we sold. And the difference, and you're gonna have water loss when you flush lines, and you're gonna have it, but. But that'll help us with our water loss, and, and I just think it's a cool. I, I, I have sat here in awe, and I've seen people walk in, and you know the look on their face. You know they're mad, and you know they're upset. And they walk up to Debbie or Melissa, and they throw their bill down, and they simply pull the chart up, they pull the graph up. And they say, well, you have a, if you have a leak, you have an intermediate, intermediate leak, go check your toll. And, you know, they never call back, and they, they never say, well, you're right. But they're not mad.
Yeah, I mean, I guess nobody says good news, like, oh, a leak, you know?
But it, I, I think as we educate our customers more and more on water consumption and water usage. It's just, it's a, it's a powerful tool for us, it's an informational tool for them. They know what they're doing, I think this will come in very handy when the summer rolls around. There's no way I put that much water in my yard. I, I didn't, I didn't water that, you know? Well, turns out you water your yard two hours, three times a week. And, you know, you use an extra eight thousand gallons of water, or whatever it is. That'll help tremendously. And of course.
It's been very, very useful and beneficial.
So, anyway, I wanted, y'all have any questions for Debbie?
One question on the alarm schedule. On the alarms, can that be sent as a text message or just email?
Um, email.
Just. Eventually, it will be a text.
Okay, because that, especially if it's an alarm about a leak, you'd want to. Because I don't necessarily check email.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. No, it doesn't have a, a cell, it just does an email or a brand.
Okay.
So that, yeah, that would be something to. That would be something to find out if we can do that.
When we, when we. I, I know one of the, one of the times we went today, they do text messages.
I was just wondering, we don't have any type of meters within our main lines to, to gauge how much water flows. I just think that theoretically, if you knew what left the plant, and then you had different meters, different main lines, to know what flows through there. Then theoretically, you could find out if you do have a leak, where that leak is, instead of.
I don't know if they make meters, because you're looking at sixteen.
It's an inline meter, so, yeah, I mean.
It's a sixteen inch meter, I, I don't know if they.
Or somehow, somehow it would count, it should be interesting.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, and I get the point.
I live in the, the street washes out.
Well, the one thing is, I know the plant monitors what our usage is, and if they have a spike, they do tell the water department, hey, guys, we got a spike. You know, two hundred thousand gallons, and they start looking for it. You know, be aware.
Yeah.
Whether it's on the raw water line, whether it's on the.
In the old days, it was just me watering my garden.
Well, we actually had that situation Sam was discussing, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, right before Christmas?
No.
Actually, was the second one, the other one was over here. Over here.
That park.
Right off the park in, in the pasture area, in that, between Park, Park Street and the railroad. Randy kept saying, we are losing water, where there's a spike alarm, there's a spike of water. And they drove around, and of course, you know, if you, if it's a massive water leak, they're gonna be able to see it, someone's already called it.
Or somebody's probably in here.
It was in the roadway, in the pasture area off of Park, between Park and the railroad. And, you know, I don't know how Clyde, Clyde found it, but it was a good ten, twenty feet off of the. I guess he was just walking where the line was, and you could just see the, the water bubbling up. But that's, you know, that's how we communicate within the city of, and the problem, you need to go check it out, it's not just hunt and peck.
Brian, the fresh man, this data is crunched made from the meters here. Is your, is your advice at the tower?
Yes, there's a, it's called a collector, and it just, the meters feed the information to it. And it sends out a signal to the internet, and it comes through here, and that's how it gets on to you.
So it doesn't require any one scanning the person or anything?
No, just, just the ones that have the radio read, the rest of it just goes directly to that tower.
And what's your, what's total meters you receive?
About twenty-two hundred, twenty-two hundred.
Any other questions?
So once we get it set up for the customers, will we have another meeting to show them?
Yes.
Cause I had that one guy call and say, we put a new meter in, we show him how to read it.
Yeah, so how to read the meter?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's self, the meter is self?
Yeah, you have to put a flashlight over it.
Yeah, it's a bugger to try to read one of those. It doesn't stay on very long.
It doesn't read.
We will, the, the plan is, once all the bugs have been worked out, this system's only been up for about a month. Little over a month. Once the bugs have been worked out, we will hold a public hearing and encourage everybody to come, and we will walk them through this. We also discussed having a video on YouTube, and putting it on our YouTube channel for folks to, you know, look at it and so on and so forth. They won't videotape the, the public hearing when we're demonstrating it. We want our customers to be engaged in this system as much as possible.
Well, it's their information that we can have, and that way they can at least determine, you know, if they have a problem with it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And they're not screaming in the online to ladies.
Well, that's probably what this will happen. No, it happens in Berry, it's outside the miller all the time. Thank you Debbie for coming, so thank you for sharing your light.
There's also that infomap, it's gonna be installed on Thursday, where it's basically GIS. And they called me today and said, we didn't install it yet.
That's gonna be like our, our meter locator part. Explain to them what GIS, what the GIS, what the infomap is.
Uh, it just shows you, uh, what is geographic information system, it just shows you basically where the water lines are gonna be. Where the meters are at, the fire hydrants, and we sent us some aerial photos, so it'll be easier to locate them by just looking at it. Instead of having to go and tap in a bunch of information. We'll see how that's gonna work.
That's basically our water department to locate lines and locate meters and hide them.
And you can also put in the information for each meter, water out of the, the eyes, which that'll probably. And it'll be a process to, but.
But that's information that they're gonna have in their hand going forward, as far as being able to update that when they're in the field?
Yeah, right now, we're just, we've just got one, one license available for either a laptop or tablet or whatever. And we don't really, I wouldn't trust class laptop right now with that. But yeah, they can go out into the field, and if they're, if you gotta repair something or whatever, they can tap in whatever they repair. Or, and then bring it back up here, look at the computer, upload information updates.
Awesome. Clyde's laptop is so old, the Russians won't even hack it.
Doesn't try to get in it.
To kind of dovetail off of, off of this, I was discussing a number of things with Scotty and Clyde this morning, at our staff meeting. There is a, and this probably needs to come up at a later date, but I'm just dovetailing here. There's a system called MyGov, which is a kind of a cafeteria communication plan. And essentially what it is, is there's a water leak at one, two, three Main Street. Bobby Daniels calls it in, there's a water leak, and so we go out there, Clyde identifies the leak. Clyde, or Carlos, or anyone else can sit there and punch in the number of employees it took to fix the leak, how long it took for them to fix the leak. The size of the pipe that was there, and the parts that were used that was there. And then they'll have, Corey, we being Corey, will go in there and tell, okay, the plant costs this much, the employees, it costs this much in labor, it costs this much, blah, 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 blah. And so we can communicate, we can kind of articulate how much the leak's gonna cost us. Then, when, when the leak is repaired and done, Clyde basically gets finished, then it sends the email to me, and an email to Scott Watkins saying, there's a big hole at one, two, three Main Street. You need to come fix it. And we'll put barricades up on it, and it'll be temporary, but this is a big old hole that needs to get fixed, needs to get repaired. So Scotty now knows that they did a water leak, and now it's, needs to go get fixed. One of the problems is that we're having such a number of them, that we don't know when they're done, when they're not done, so on and so forth. And so I think that'll help us out too. I want to bring that to you, it'll probably be sometime this summer until I can get some good data presented to you, but. One of my conferences that I went to, they were discussing this, and it sounds like a really neat communication system. And if nothing else, it tells you how much the leak costs. It, it even calculates for approximate how much water we've lost, so on and so forth. Just a cool high tech thing. I was gonna say, internal communication thing for us to keep up with all the departments, rather than he said, she said, or they didn't say.
Yes.
So why don't you just segue into your business, the city administration, by your report? Okay. You've got your financial statements for, and again, I apologize for getting this to you today, but this was the earliest we could get it to you. As I've talked about before, we will, I guess February, not February, harder than I do. April, April third is the, is the, first, we'll have council meeting on April the third. I will present reports to you on April the seventeenth. The third is just too hard for me to get numbers to you, so y'all can take a good look at them. There's nothing in there overly concerning at the moment. From a cash standpoint, we're actually better than we were last year. Our sales tax is up six percent, and so we're doing pretty good on that standpoint. We're actually selling less water than we did a year ago, but I think that's gonna change as well. We also, but we, well, the revenues are down, we also modified the two thousand to three thousand gallons. And so I think that's, that's helping out quite a bit. The limb and brush truck, I understand our citizens frustrations if they've called in and there's limbs that are just hanging out there. We have over two hundred and fifty service orders that we're trying to process, and it's just gonna take time, just patience and time. We are getting to it, you are on the list, it has not been forgotten, but you can still call. There's a sign on the side of the brush truck, says for brush truck pickup, please call. And so, but we do, we are running that thing eight hours a day, and we're working as fast as we can to get that situation resolved. The fire department is gonna come and probably make a request on a number of things. One of the things is already in their budget, they want to purchase a number of C containers, and they want to develop a, I guess, a training facility. It meets their, it would meet their TEES certification, it's repel, it's rescue, it's, it's modeled after something they saw in Floyd A to Texas. And so they're gonna come to you with that. They also told me this morning that they are, they're the new fire truck, or not, they want a used fire truck that they want to go purchase. And so I was gonna get more details from Mr. Langston on the vehicle itself, that he's been out of his pocket today. And so, but expect that to come your way at some point. We are draining the stand pipe, so we'll be running out the elevated tower for probably the rest of the week. If you see, if, if anybody experienced. Um, if you see, if anybody experiences any pressure or loss of pressure, contact City Hall, and we'll do what we can. Uh, we don't anticipate that happening, but we want everybody to know. Uh, they're just draining the standpipe to clean it and scrub it, and all those other good things that they do. This is part of our contract with, um, who is it about? Yeah, utility services. And so this is one of the things we already paid for, so they're coming out to do it. And, um, starting tomorrow morning, I'm going to start working on our RFP for garbage collection. Um, I'll work on the language on that, but one of the things that we've discussed internally is the pot, the potential of doing our own collection and setting up a transfer station here. And so, um, I'm going to work on those numbers and bring you two different options. One's an RFP option, the other one is us doing it in-house option. And that way, uh, y'all can make the most educated decision in your infinite wisdom. Uh, and that is it. Uh, well, one more thing, I think Scott Watkins, uh, we're going to, at the staff meeting this morning, we discussed, uh, potential street improvements, uh, coming to you guys with the improvements we want to make this next coming year, um, and kind of tip y'all off on what we're thinking of doing, and get y'all's feedback on that as well. Uh, but we are tall and base, uh, we are very low on asphalt. Um, I told him to order five trucks and go get five trucks. So we should get our, the asphalt's the black stuff that we, we are very low on it, and so we're getting that. We also are collecting rock, he's negotiating a great price on the rock that we use Chip Seal, and he is negotiating the price on the asphalt, the hot mix that you put down before you put it in.
That's a shop lot, isn't it?
Well-
What chemical do you buy it in?
We negotiate that price now, and then we use it throughout the season.
Oh, so you can just pick it up on demand?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I was looking, you're putting it somewhere, it has a shop lot.
If you call them on Tuesday-
It's on the ad.
Yeah, if you call them on Tuesday, you go in on Wednesday, you're going to pay basically a wrap rate.
Right, right.
But if we can, if we can tell them that we're going to do five trucks, 10 trucks, 15 trucks, then they will get us a better quote.
Yeah. I heard, I said nobody knows, store it, store it, it's not going to be bad.
No, no.
Maybe it'll be fine, man.
Oh, no.
I was curious, maybe there's some on asphalt, but you're right, bro.
Uh, no. No, negative goes travel pattern school. Uh, but we're negotiating those, those contracts, um, uh, right now, so. Any questions, concerns, or comments? Anything, Eloy, Bob, Yogi?
Where are the C containers going to be placed?
Out the airport, thank you for asking. Um, we have some property almost at the end of the runway. Um, we own all of it, but there's, there's some vacant property over at the end of the runway, uh, and they don't need a whole lot, they're just going to, they're going to build up and not out.
I'll stay on.
It's going to be like a training facility where they're doing, or getting that, and then fill off the top. Dual purpose or triple purpose, everyone put it?
Yeah, and the idea behind that is, um, they can go do TEAC training in a number of locations, but the odds of them doing the training with the people, there are actually going to be five fires, but they're not going to go to Temple to fight fire. I mean, well, they could, but most likely they're not. Um, and Temple's not going to come out to Ballenger, they could, but most likely they're not. Most likely it's going to be Rowena, uh, Winters, the, uh, surrounding agencies or groups. We can set up TEAC training, they can come to Ballenger and do their training alongside with us. So you're now training with the person most likely you're going to be working with when fire comes. Clear as mud?
I'm just saying with these containers, you can build a tower, probably if you're just talking about, you're talking about more than repellent, Sam?
More than repellent, yes.
Okay.
It's not just for repellent.
What, what sort of uses?
They're going to be doing fire training within containers, inside.
Okay.
For close quarters, or like a building where they're on the second floor and the building tapes in, they're going to be doing training for that as well.
So it's beyond repellent?
Yes, it's not just for repellent. S and R.
Okay.
It's going to be multiple uses? I've got-
Sweetwater, or just for repellent?
Yeah, this is, this is far more, it's multifunctional. Floyd A. Floyd A, I've got pictures of what Floyd A did. Um, and if you'd like, we can road trip to Floyd A. It's a, it's basically a low-cost way for the smaller departments to get together and be able to do something in order to stay abreast of their training. And like the guys have said, they'll be able to bring everybody here, our guys can get certified when you do the training here, because a lot of times what happens is your smaller departments, smaller than Ballenger Department, don't go to that training at, um, College Station, Pre-A. They don't have the money or the time, and during the time of year that that is, that's usually when they're fighting grasshoppers, and they only have a department of five or 10 people, so they don't go. But if it's a small regional, they can do a day or two, three, and be able to go home and come back, or if they have a fire, they can actually get to that one. So it has a multiple purpose to it. That's, yeah, that's my report.
All righty. All right, here are requests for feature of Jenna Hines from City Council. Is there anything else we need to get on the agenda, please?
Got you, Bounder Esports. Yes, sir.
I had, uh, my kitten, I guess, approach me, I guess, last week. She was asking when we're going to fix that. I guess when we did, uh, the pipe reter, there's still, they go, oh, I guess there's grass growing.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And she wanted to know when we're going to.
On 8th Street?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, that'll get fixed this summer. Yeah, we're, we're trying to not, and the problem is, is that we still have to cut it, do the cross cuts on some of 8th Street. We're trying to not rip that up. Um, there's literally five layers of asphalt on 8th Street. I mean, it's, it's a good sturdy street. Um, the water department wants to fix it one way, the street department wants to fix it another way.
She was asking, she was wondering, she did her grass growing, she's doing it down.
Yeah, it, it, it won't grow there much longer. It's going to get fixed this summer. How it's going to get fixed is the $64,000 question.
They haven't agreed on how to fix it. But they're trying to prevent us from tearing up 8th Street because it is one of the better streets. And we know it needs repairing, but we don't want to-
We're trying to minimize the amount of, um, displacements. We do not want another 11th Street scenario on 8th Street. Just to be candid.
That would be worse than 11th Street, yes.
I'll let her know.
And we also? Second? All right.
Bob, you got anything you want to know?
All righty, Bounder City Council, Shemene Executive Session is authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551, Act 071. Consultation of City Attorney, through the intention contract with the U5.